Richard, you want to go up here and say something?
Richard.
He's here.
Over here.
He's here.
I'm trying to like joke.
Richard, please come right at the door by the time we get things started.
That's like Kerry Coleman, and then the big sword.
Now, when I come through, don't you pick on me. Okay. Here's my reading of the point. I can take attention please at this time for the call of the county council board of commissioners order. Of course, our first order of business will be the higher pledge of education. And I'd like to call all committees to do that for us. And case of law. A pledge made just to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the which is famous, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Welcome before you. Humbly deny thank you for argumenting place. Each one of you, turn aside together here. Humbly thank you for freedom to do that. Thank you for those who have served and those who continue to serve across the world to defend those freedoms. For those who make difficult decisions for our nation, our state, and for our county. To guide them and give them wisdom and certain. Ask all of they do good place to be. This we ask you, if they're over there. Thank you. Our next in item is the executive officials. I think you have officials here, each stand your recommend. Thank you, Richard. Aaron, do you stand to recognize? Okay, did you stand to recognize?
Chris Gray, tax minister.
Chris. And looking, I don't see any, but anyone in the office who would like to be recognized. Commissioners. Last year had a special meeting tonight with a lot of vision centers that have been able to join us. So, the four of us, of course, were pretty good to share in there. And if you will allow me to regress just for a second. I would like to thank again David Dear. The board servant, our county manager. And his last meeting, his last, uh, work session last week. And David, again, thank you for all the service that you have done for this county. I know he's still gonna be around and all that. Thank you for putting us through a lot of time. And helping us in the selection committee of historic moment we're making now as county manager. On the job now.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Joe, let's see your thing about either one.
I would love it if only David was here when I first came on. And he sure took the time to guide me through some of the depths and processes I need to learn. He does good to keep me quiet. By itself, I'm continuing. With his guidance, his support, over the period of time, we have been very successful. In his craftsmanship, creating partnership throughout the county, despite, and even nationwide with some of the projects that we had worked on, people who saw this. You can see what your idea was of grand center. But the partnership he created there, nobody else has got. You've got three outfits, you have three government agencies coming together to do something. Because most of the time, we're already getting this, set talk in other county. He has a big hand in that, somebody else got big shoes to fill. In keeping these partnerships alive and to keep creating the different projects we got going on. I like to thank him for that. And yeah, I know just doing a good job in the future. With his background and his knowledge and knowing some of the people he's working with. But this can be another win-win for us, that we've created another partnership that we can make successful. I'd like to thank both of us. Uh, I think everybody probably knows what I think of David, you know, like. Uh, more than just a friend. We've been a long time ago in a lot different cities. And so, I really can't put into words what it's meant to me professionally, if it was personally. But I think the county will bear the fruit. A lot of his work for a long time, coming from the, he's been involved in so many valuable projects for the county. And Rob, Jeff, and Ford, I'm sure, have done a great job. And I think we just have a great team together. We're not really losing David, just, uh, getting another guy on board to help. Back to some other little brokers, so, but Jeff, thanks, David.
David, I speak the same as the other commissioners have tonight. You've been like a mentor, a great shoulder to lean on in many situations and conversations that we've had. And I appreciate the power that you've given me as a new county commissioner. And, um, bring me up to speed on a lot of things in our pockets and things that go on in the county. There are gonna be missed, but we know you're not far away, so don't forget that. You can't hide, but you can't, you can't, you can get away, but you can't hide, we did that. And Jeff, we do look forward to you being here. You do have some big shoes to fill, but we know that you can do them right up. And we appreciate you being here too.
Now, everything we've done has always been a team effort. And you guys certainly been a great team. And you've just got a new team leader there in Jeff, and he'll do a great job. And Jared, you're down to talk about it if you want to.
Well, I've told probably people over and over again, sometimes almost in tears, that I really don't know what I would've done without him this summer. I mean, that was a, a big whoa, uh, when we had some changes. So, um, I really want to thank you for being there for us. I think in the positions we're in, we do live it every single day. And, um, and we had a leader within a week. Ronnie, you did a great job as the county manager for a week. So, I, I, you weren't there long enough for me to put you on the wall. But really, in all seriousness, um, and I'm really looking forward to the, the good things. I mean, I can feel already the synergy and all in our department. And, and the relationships that are already building. And I feel like we're gonna keep on moving and keep on driving forward as a county with Jeff, I don't believe it.
I'm gonna know you had an in Dave long, we made your comments.
Oh, wow. David, thank you so much for all that you've done for the county attorney's office and specifically for me through the last six years. I've worked and worked with you via Bob and on several projects. And you are quite an idle man, and I left a great impression on me. And so, I'm excited about working with Mr. Richardson and Jeff, I know you're Tar Heel. So, we are, we already have a lot of time.
What you gonna say about it?
I'm glad Jeff's here, and they, you're not going far to hide your number. I'm not worried about that, so, uh, I'm excited and very pleased and glad Jeff's here.
And now, I mean, David, tell all this, but I'm gonna leave you there. I did say it was historic, oh, really too. First, we got you, we're counting. Secondly, Jeff, you're the first county manager of David County. Forty plus years that has been chosen in-house. Forty plus, sorry, Mr. Peters, is back in the late sixties. That's four. I think that's kind of a historic thing to actually, that county managers actually come in the house like this. They kind of rated all of them, David had the kids.
He was here for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was here for a while, and got, took a while to get smart and get back.
Anyway, let's get on with it. Commissioners, you see, oh, Jennifer, for you, the only thing I would like to add, if y'all will allow, is we have been asked by President Jeffers of the Workout Association, Town Commissioners, to show a short video. Here it says it's two to three minutes, and we'll do that like for our vision reports. That's a page.
I make a point to yourself. If there's no way to add, I make a note to yourself that doesn't put additional to your video.
Not according to official questions.
How's that, David?
Adam, any questions? All the papers, if you're ready to begin. Thank you. Uh, citizen recognition is our next one. And we have one individual sign up, Robert. We want to have the patient name and the address. All right, we're good about it.
My name is Robert Williams. I live in eighteen states, Glen Trail, beautiful downtown halls. I live in fifty states, and I thoroughly enjoy being in the county. Thoroughly enjoyed, and I enjoy being, being, uh... If you remember, this, this, uh, years ago, in the, in the championship, ACC championship, state beat Duke, they gained twelve to ten. I want you to know, I was there and I saw it personally. It was a good game. And, you know, I think for it. Couple things, one is, on your consent agenda, uh, I don't know, there's no real place for public comment except through citizen recognition. And since I found out how to use the computer, the system to look at this kind of stuff. I noticed, uh, I indeed, this coast-to-coast medicine card, or whatever the... It, it, it appears that somebody really learned from the Boys and Girls Club, Cleveland County, and asked permission to endorse some kind of medication card, prescription card. Some kind of prescription card of some sort. And, uh, when I was looking to do that, I just wondered, is that the kind of business that county commissioners need to be in? Is endorse the product? The money that they would get off that thing, according to the letter from the Boys and Girls Club, they expect them to cost the, the, the money to come through county commissioners and to me. But in your paperwork, uh, your agreement with the coast-to-coast folks, I didn't see that happening. It looks like the county commissioner, by endorsing this product, would receive some kind of money for it. And there's a lot of products out there, so I don't know what kind of business you gotta go, get into to endorse the product.
...for commissioners, your citizens, and others doing throughout county and how they are working to make Cleveland County better if possible. And at this time, I would like to turn it over as I have here now to Richard Hooker, who is on the Cleveland County's Board, to talk about the minority enterprise development week. And Richard, would you want to read resolutions? Would you like to have his belt? Or you just want to talk?
I want to talk first, Mr. Chair, and now that this has been agreed. Probably do a little more acting job. But let me first take this opportunity to thank the board of commissioners, Mr. Chair, and the members, and to all of Mr. Joe Richardson. This is a great occasion for us to come before you requesting your consideration for a proclamation for the week of October thirteenth through nineteenth as the minority enterprise development week. Let me also say that I had the opportunity this month to go to a state kickoff event week. And while the first thing we've done, a kickoff acknowledging May 20th of the state, who pleased to have the governor issue a state proclamation proclaiming minority enterprise development week. And I was pleased that Cleveland County was recognized for our continuous and ongoing efforts to recognize and celebrate and smooth the achievements of our local minority businesses, our local community partners, and humanitarian who do good work to give back to the people. So with that, I do want to again thank the board of commissioners for their ongoing support for minority enterprise week. I want to say also that the this year's celebration actually kicks off this evening with a meeting greet and Women in Business Series that we're doing. We're going to be doing that at six thirty at the Donald Gibson Theater. And certainly want to extend an invitation for any commissioners or staff to attend to join in our initial celebration. Going to have our speaker, Mrs. Lucian Brooks, who is recognized throughout the chartered area for her professional ability in claiming the authentic you. And we're pleased that she's joining us to kick off our May 20th celebration. And we do have a series of activities highlighted on October fifteenth. You know, there's our annual awards gala. This in the past, we've done it once, which is at Cleveland College, which is at Horned Park. And this year, we're going to do the gala dinner, which will be at the entertainment center on October fifteenth. We're going to have Patricia Houston, native, son or sister Patricia Houston, internationally recognized for working in the table and business as our key student. We will also have work involved in working to the schools' productive forums, highlighting the importance of minority enterprise development week, and celebrating the efforts to improve college grade, and that's one of the highlights. Then we'll conclude on October nineteenth with a burning leaders lecture series. We're going to have two advisors coming in and talk about leadership, future development for our burning leaders in this field. So we continue to develop and cultivate new leaders to be involved in our community and including the policy life of this business. And let me conclude by saying this, and this is for the benefit of our Commissioner, Patrick, since he gave me my closing remarks. In the spirit of entrepreneurialism and in the spirit of our American dream, in order for us to be successful entrepreneurs, I will leave you with this. If it is to be, it is up to me. And I hope you appreciate me, Mr. Commissioner. That concludes my remarks.
This is a proclamation recognizing minority enterprise development week, October thirteenth to nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. Whereas minority enterprise development week is an annual observance that has been proclaimed by the President of the United States since nineteen eighty-three to highlight the important role and contributions minority business enterprises bring to our local, national, and global economy. And whereas this year's theme, energizing the economy with minority business enterprises, reflects the value that makes our nation strong and economically viable through a history of noteworthy contributions, past achievements, and transformative leadership within our free enterprise system. And whereas the Cleveland County Business Development Center has led the way to partner with local stakeholders to promote business and network opportunities, encourage civic participation, and support educational and leadership programs, including the Women in Business Series, youth forums, emerging leaders lecture series, and annual award celebrations to improve the overall business climate. And whereas the state of North Carolina will highlight Minority Enterprise Development Month by proclamation by the governor in support of programs across the state to encourage participation of historically underutilized businesses and promote awareness, risks, opportunities, and rewards of business ownership in North Carolina. And whereas this year's annual May 20th award celebration in Cleveland County will bring together small business owners and community stakeholders to honor and commemorate the accomplishments of small business owners, local citizens, and community partners who give their time, expertise, and humanitarian efforts to make a difference in our community and beyond. Now therefore, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October thirteenth to nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County. In recognition of the cooperative efforts of the above sponsoring organizations and individuals to enhance, promote, and support the success of minority-owned businesses and other community partners, adopted this the first day of October, two thousand thirteen, by the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, at this time, you've heard a resolution by the President, Mr. President.
I'll make the most of the resolution.
I'll second it.
On the favor of the chair, I mean. And I'd like to call you here with it.
Richard, it's a great pleasure and honor that I present this resolution on behalf of the board of commissioners. We know the great work you do in the community and the impact it has on everybody involved. And just it's just a great, great feeling. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next gentleman, Public Attorney, economic development, and this is for Project Lakewood. This time, Richard. A political term.
Good evening.
How much you pay?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Richardson. We're so delighted to have you here this evening. Welcome. The incentive agreement I am presenting this evening is made between Cleveland County and Project Lakewood. This company will be constructing a building that will be a hundred thousands per feet, projected in phase one. It will be located in the foothills commerce center in Shelby. The company intends to create a hundred and seventy-seven new full-time jobs within five years of this agreement. The entire project will include buildings and the installation of machinery and equipment that totals a projected twenty-six million dollars. I would like to briefly review the incentives that are outlined in this contract. Incentive one, the county shall make a one-time grant to the company of fifty thousand dollars to be used by the company for site prep works, such as grading. The grant shall be made to the company within fifteen days of commencement of grading at the project site. If the company does not begin operations of the project within twenty-four months of the date of the agreement, then the company shall be paid the fifty thousand dollars to the county within fifteen days of the expiration of the twenty-four months. Incentive two, in order to receive the next incentive, the company must begin construction of the project within twelve months of the execution of this agreement. The incentive grant that will be awarded will be for seven years and will be an annual amount equal to sixty-five percent of the county applicable taxes. If the company at any time fails to pay all applicable property taxes, does not comply or drew to what is stated within this agreement, therefore, we are aware that the county does have the authority to terminate this agreement. Thank you so much for your consideration, Mr. Richardson. Any questions?
I think I'll form the job, a hundred and seventy-seven job in there, in the upper thirty thousand years. So maybe one, two, three, four, five, which is above average, please.
That is correct. That is correct. It is the C R of our county, Commissioner.
At this time, Public Attorney, Governor, anyone who should speak for our kids. Please come up to the podium, make your name, please. Anyone should speak for our kids.
The county state here, Cleveland County Economic Development Partnership. First off, I wanted to be in the county's vision for your vision in new sets. We can have a development here in Cleveland County. If you folks had not had the vision to be able to work for the city to create a business park built there, the Commonwealth Center, some five or six years ago, build the first state building and create an environment for a company like this to be here. They wouldn't be here today. We would be here seeking to locate in our park. They are an ideal pen for the park as it was designed as a light industrial business park. Again, as Kristen said, a hundred and seventy-seven jobs, twenty-six million dollars worth of investment. And this is just phase one of the plan to face operation. And there's jobs will increase, investment will increase, the size of the building will increase sometime over the next thirty-five years, we don't know. So I am here to speak on behalf of the project askers to continue to support and contribute to our development. And we do thank the board for your support.
Anyone who should speak for or again?
My name is Robert Lee. I live in the same place I told you a while ago. I fully intended to come up here and speak against this project for one reason. That in the paperwork that's included in the internet summary, there was no mention of at all that I can see, albeit kind of pay scale, pay average, or whatever. And my thoughts was, you know, we've had, we've had a number of industries come along. A hundred out of the computer, the virtual part, the hotel, and the data center. All of those job, the pay wasn't that many jobs in data center and hotel. The pay scales wasn't that high. And I couldn't find anything in there about pay scale. So I had to just guess the reason nothing was said about pay scales, that they were going to be lower. Well, Johnny just said they're going to be above average, so I changed my mind. And I think that's what people with open minds can do. When you have the information in front of you, that that gives my, my scale from, from an eight to a five. And I'd like to congratulate the commissioners and the economic development folks for doing a good job. Because I remember, Ron, you brought up that, I'm not young enough anymore, but I remember picking cotton. I remember, I remember working in cotton fields, cotton fields, and a summer job. I remember working at this work, play, glass, on the summer job when I came down. I never worked a fire, but a lot of people I know did. And I know the local for the building pack in Cleveland County in those days was pretty close to zero. When you worked in the cotton field, the cotton industry, you were, you were, the only way ahead was to leave Cleveland County. And in the process, I left Cleveland County for about this many years. But I think, I think what the mix of companies we need to have is sure we're going to have low-paying jobs, cotton field jobs were low-paid. But when fiber and PPG came in, it was a higher paying job. And more opportunity for people that didn't have anywhere to go except somewhere else, they would tend to gravitate to that level. And then the folks that didn't have jobs could gravitate into those jobs. And you had, you had more of a stable economy in Cleveland County. Of course, the last few years, we had kind of upset all of that. And I think this is, this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Lee. Thank you. Again, anyone who should speak for or again? Here none, seeing none. Our Public Attorney closed. Commissioners, questions? I hear a question, and I hear a motion that intended for article eight to be approved.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion for approval of article eight, with the Commissioner's questions.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Allen, second it.
I think it's, like Lawrence said, this is another win and four. That a hundred and seventy job, you know, of average. Get some high, get some low. This is another low potential of a expansion project later on, you know. And one thing too, us moving from a tier one to a tier two county, it makes it very, very hard to negotiate. Companies coming in to Cleveland County now, so I'd like to commend the economic development team, Eddie, David, Christian, and any other groups to work on this thing. Because they, they did a good job, and we get it for them. I want to say thank you.
Christian, I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work of the team, the economic development team does. And you know, you're coming to us on Tuesday nights, we have a great opportunity like this, and you talk about asking us to agree on the incentives. But I know that there's a complete package that you put together for these companies. They entice them, give them reasons for wanting to come to Cleveland County beyond just the incentives. Could you just maybe touch base on a couple of those, a few of those idols? That you have, your patches are all from the great things in Cleveland County that we have.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. The business of recruiting industry is so highly competitive right now. And like you mentioned, Johnny, moving from a tier one county to a tier two, we've lost some of those financial incentive tools that we used to have in our back pockets. And now we're really, really having to get creative. You know, incentives are just a small piece of the puzzle. When you're working on recruiting industries, just a tiny piece. The International Economic Development Council annually ranks the primary site location criteria that, that influences site location decisions. And if I recall, incentives are only maybe number five on our list out of seven. Seven different criteria. Workforce is typically number one. And right now, Cleveland County, in terms of our labor shed, we really truly have a large labor shed. But we have a phenomenal community college that is coming up with some of the most creative strategic workforce development strategies around. They're ranked in the top ten percent of community colleges in the country. They just received a thirteen million dollar grant, which is just, that grant alone and what we put together, what a community college put together for Project Lakewood, I would say was, was the catalyst that helped us actually win this project. So that is certainly a part of our financial incentives package that we put together. They're also looking at the ease of doing business. That, that would rank number two in terms of that criteria that, that clients are looking at. The ease of doing business and regulatory process. And that is something that sets Cleveland County apart from most counties. We have commissioners and local government officials who are absolutely willing. They make it their mission to streamline the process, to streamline permitting, to make sure that we are responsive to our clients, that we provide the most wonderful customer service that they're ever going to find when they set foot here. They're also looking at the overall cost to do a business. Cost to do a business ranks much higher than the incentives package. They want to know that the tax rates are attractive. They want to know that after those financial incentives go away, that this is going to be an affordable place to do business. So that, that is huge. They're also looking at the land and building supply that we have here, which, again, you know, we just have to thank our commissioners and our local government for working to develop product. If we didn't have the product, what can be bringing in these companies? Without real estate, it wouldn't be here. So I want to thank you guys for your vision and leadership in working towards developing shovel-ready, shovel-ready sites, industrial infrastructure, and developing product. We also have great transportation infrastructure here. That is really one of the, the key factors in a lot of their decisions when they're looking to locate. We have great accessibility with interstate eighty-five, going into the Charlotte Davis International Airport, which is one of the biggest economic drivers in the southeast. That certainly is planned into our favor. There's a certain factor in that. And then we have great access to higher education resources. And that's maybe when you look at our, our financial incentives package that we put together. We have Gardenwood University here locally, who decided they want to be a partner in economic development. And they are actually contributing to our economic development efforts by offering tuition credits to new expanding industries. So that collaboration is, is, it's really hard to find. So when you look at the overall, the overall package, we have many players. Even the utility partners get involved. They're offering discounts on utilities for four to five years. They're offering cash incentive grants. When a company is looking to locate and build a new facility, grading calls are very, very expensive site development costs, very, very expensive. They are trying to improve that financial outlook for the first two to five years if they can. Those, those incentives really help to offset those costs. So I can talk to Dave about that. But I just, I appreciate and commend you all for being so flexible and so supportive of our economic efforts. It really, it's being recognized across the country. That's why we're generating leads that we are. That's why these companies are, 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 yeah. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Just a couple things, Mr. Chair. One, as part of the thing Kristen mentioned, that we so often take the grant and constitute a business. Water and energy are two big components. She mentioned our utility packages, the rates here, the levels on here are our big movers in the cost of doing business. And secondly, she alluded to the community college. This project came through the community college touring the automation park, which is due in the state from that town. And I think Kristen and Mr. Mayor will tell you that was one of the things. Plugs in our community that they, that kind of areas. People in our community probably just now are beginning to get a real feeling for the strength that that community college really has and the drive to progress. It's becoming more and more as a public dog. That's all I have to say.
We have a motion to say to approve the incentives for Project Lakewood. Ask for other comments, questions. Your time on the presentation, I mean. There is our ready agenda. We will move to video, right, the Jeffers.
Hello, I'm person county vice chair, Frank Jeffers, and president of the North Carolina Association of President's Missions. I would like to invite you to join me in helping the NCA ACCC group in all work for this county. Our organization is only as strong as our government, and we need every county to be engaged. There are many ways you can be involved to our organization.
Thanks, President Jeffers. The NCA ACCC has been advocating for counties for more than one hundred years. And along the way, we have found that the best advocates for county government are you, our local elected officials. That's why we'd like to make it easy for you to help us achieve your goals, President Jeffers. Legislative Council, Sam Skinner, is going to tell you about how you can become involved.
One of the best ways county resources get on is on one of our seven steering committees. The steering committees provide guidance and recommendations to the board directors of seven policy areas. Their agriculture, environment, general government, health and human services, justice and public safety, public education, and tax compliance. The committees meet quarterly and will consider information on emerging county related issues. Each steering committee will be meeting in October, and I hope you will consider serving that committee. You can sign up for a steering committee on our website.
The association does a lot more than advocate for county interests. Another part of our mission is to provide education and training for county commissioners and county staff. Associate Director of Education, Jason King, is going to tell you more about an exciting opportunity we have coming up in October.
On October fifteenth, the NCA ACCC will sponsor a seminar on implementation of the Affordable Care Act and its impacts on county government. This day long seminar is free and will be held at the shared to boot Telkomsel County. We will bring policy experts from the National Association of Counties and other organizations to discuss with county officials the steps the counties need to be considering to make sure they're ready for this change. Elected officials can learn about the policy implications, and staff can learn about the details of implementing the Affordable Care Act. Counties will be impacted by the ACA in numerous ways, as employers, as providers of public health services, and as administrators of the state's Medicaid program. This seminar will help counties understand the issues that could come up as the ACA becomes law. I hope to see you in Orange County on October fifteenth. For more information about this seminar, please visit our website, the insurance office, your agent.
Thanks, Jason. Another way that we provide services to counties is through our risk management pools. You might not know that the NCA ACCC is the number one provider of insurance for workers' compensation and liability and property for North Carolina's county governments. And you may send our General Counsel, Mr. Hare, to explain.
The risk management pools were created to help counties and county entities better manage the costs associated with liability and property insurance and workers' compensation insurance. Our programs are specifically tailored to meet the unique needs of county government. We also provide an extensive risk control service to help members reduce their costs by identifying and eliminating potential risks. If you would like to learn more about our pool, please visit the NCA ACCC website and click on the Risk Management tab.
As you can see, the NCA ACCC does a lot for our government. I hope you will join me this year as we seek to make the NCA ACCC an even more valuable partner for all of our county governments.
Commissioners, I'd like to do a special report, not begin and end in the same place. If you got something you'd like to say, to our department, who won't talk again, but who is going to go on?
I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Just remind everyone of the important announcement Friday, October fourth. I think so far, the governor is scheduled to have an appearance, an official announcement.
Okay, I got the MPO, we MPO'd that last week. Just think it has the rules, the guidelines, so it's a physical duty. But I looked at it, probably saw that, I guess, I guess City Gaston you supporting the fight divided by whole ain't. And what the MPO did, they support doing it from Belmont to South Mountain. I think the City Gaston you did a resolution, do it in support of Molly, two seventy-four. But along with that, the MPO accepted, adopted all the line, called it, we broke up in sections, no use. We got no use in creating bottleneck where it comes into our camp, that's what they're trying to get rid of. And Holly to open up Gaston, you can open up all the way from behind. And what they're saying is this would be instead of the garden parkway that they had rather have the line of eight-five to open up the bottleneck on the airport. And so they haven't yet. So other than that, yes, it's supposed to be on the Amal, on the Amal. We've got something planned this, this week on it, and on the other, people call it, and the other senior center. I've got a thing lined up, and I'll bring something five later to you.
Five to hear about once.
Yeah.